Trustees of public funds. Article two, shall general obligation bonds or notes of the town of Chester in an amount not to exceed $380,000, $380,000, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, be issued for the purpose of providing grant match to complete construction on culvert replaced on Green Mountain Turnpike and paving the Andover Road. Said project is paving to be financed for a term of seven years. Article three, shall obligation bonds or notes of the town of Chester in an amount not to exceed $215,000, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, be issued for the purpose of purchasing a dump truck for highways in the amount of $160,000, a chipper for the highway department in the amount of $55,000 to be financed for a term of five years. This equipment is replacing existing equipment at the end of useful life and are not additions of the town inventory. Article four, shall general obligation bonds or notes of the town of Chester in an amount not to exceed $350,000, subject to reduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, be issued for the purpose of purchasing an ambulance to be financed for a term of 10 years. This equipment is replacing existing equipment at the end of useful life and is not an addition to the town inventory. So those four articles will be on the Australian ballot, and we invite you all to vote on those, the second floor. So now I want to pause for a moment, and I want to introduce one of our three towns, our state senators, and I'm going to ask Allison Clarkson to speak to you briefly about what's going on in the Senate side of the legislature in Montpelier.
Thank you very much for, I don't want to blop Deb here. Thank you very much for being willing to hear from your, your state partners. This is the time to celebrate our municipal life together, and I'm cognizant that, that those of us who aren't part of the town are slightly intruding. On the other hand, we are your biggest partners. The state and the town work closely together, and Heather will fill you in. I have a great partner locally in Heather Chase, and you are very lucky to have her representing you in the State House. Not only does she obviously understand everything Chester, but she, she has her select board experiences, it's just been great to have you. So thank you so much for joining us. I'm Allison Clarkson. I represent you as one of the three Windsor County State Senators, Dick McCormick and Becca White are the other two, and they're doing other town meetings tonight. So I'm, I'm lucky to get to come to Chester. I serve you as the Majority Leader in the Senate, as the Vice Chair of Senate Economic Development, Housing and General Affairs, and on Senate Government Operations. And those are, we, every Senator serves on two committees. I also serve on the Climate Solutions Caucus, the Women's Caucus, and a couple other ad hoc caucuses, but our major work is done in our, in our committees. We came into this session thinking that really focused on flood recovery and mitigation. Those were really our greatest charges and the, and the challenge in front of us. Also housing and reducing climate change, obviously, as top priorities and quickly realized fully challenging perfect storm facing us in education funding, which you have probably read quite a bit about. You have read, challenging our school budgets this year are the 16.4% increase in healthcare, in teachers' healthcare, the end of one-time federal COVID money called the ESER funds, overall inflation, and the debt service on new construction and renovations across the state. In addition, we found that we needed to fix an unintended consequence in a policy change in 2022's Act 127, an act which reweighted students based on the costs of how to educate kids from poverty and kids who are learning English as a second language. And, you know, I just want to remind you that all of us are taxpayers. We are all feeling the same pain you are, and we are completely committed to working on measures that both limit, contain costs and limit tax increases. So all of us feel the same pain you do, and all of us were shocked by the December letter from our Commissioner of Tax, as you were. So after town meeting and the approval of our, of our school budgets, the legislature gets the actual bill that, for education that we then have to figure out how to, how to finance. And then we'll come to grips with the real numbers and the difficult task of matching costs and revenues. But we're also able to chew gum, walk, wear hats, and do all sorts of other things at the same time. So in all the committees working in the State House, we're working on a lot of other things. We're working on different aspects of flood recovery and future flood mitigation and climate resiliency. And one of the things I'm, where Heather and I are really pleased with in the Budget Adjustment Act, which just has been signed, each town is getting additional money from the state, not just from FEMA. So that is terrific, and Heather will update you on that. We're working on protecting our river corridors, restoring floodplains and wetlands, reviewing the health of our dams. Our dams, we have about 100 dams that are in really terrible shape, and as you know, they're incredibly expensive to repair. We're working on how government can better respond to disasters and obviously moving housing and development out of harm's way and out of the hazard zones. We're also working on addressing the housing crisis. We continue that work to reduce barriers to housing development in our downtowns and village centers in places that are appropriate for, for development. We're working on reducing regulation, permitting, and zoning, and improving all those things, and investing further in affordable and middle-income housing. So we're, we're really deep in housing and trying to make it simpler, quicker, and help finance some of it, particularly affordable and mixed-income housing. We're working on updating Act 250 to help further clarify where to build, to green light things in certain areas, and that's going to be work that all our towns are going to work together with our regional planning commissions, so that every town is invested in their own decisions on how to, what we're going to be doing with Act 250. We're working on firearm safety. We're, we're having to address open carry in polling places. Who would have thought we would have to be doing that? We're updating our open meeting law, and we're improving data privacy for both children and adults. We're having a huge challenge with data privacy and social media with our kids. And we're working on further supporting public safety. We have a number of measures that we're working on in the State House on that front. So many issues that are being addressed in all our different committees, whether it's telehealth, transportation, mental health, fish and wildlife, which you've read about, and your, your citizen legislature is working really hard to make progress on behalf of our constituents. And with federal money drying up, the COVID money, we're, money is very tight this year. We're not going to be able to fund our big heart, and Vermonters have big hearts. We face the perennial challenge of how we pay for all the good things Vermont, Vermonters need and want. Yes, it's true. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you.
I want to lay down.
Keep going, Allison.
Okay. Anyway, thank you all. I love this job, and it is, it's, it's really terrific and very satisfying. Come and visit. We'd love to have you at the State House if you need a day out. It's a wonderful way to come and see how accessible the State House is to, to all our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where does this go?
So I am now going to ask Heather Chase, our state representative, to take a moment to speak to the town meeting.
Hi, thank you so much. It's really great to be back in Chester. It's town meeting break week, and I get to be home for 10 days in a row, and I can't tell you how nice it is to be back in Chester and walking on Green Mountain Turnpike and enjoying Chester. So here I am. As you know, I've been a select board member for nine years. I won't be running again for that, and this is my last meeting. So I've had a real pleasure of serving as a select board member for the past nine years, and in that time, I've learned a great deal from things I never thought I'd know, like how to make a good road. Who would have thought? Plowing, there was a few times that I went around on the snow plow to see how the roads are plowed, how they're taken care of. I've learned about budgeting, how it is to run a municipality, and I've had a lot of grace shown on me by Julie, by Arnie, and the rest of the select board members and all of my community, and I very much appreciate it. Now I'm serving you, this is my second year, my first term as the state rep for Windsor-Windom County, and I represent you in Chester, Athens, Grafton, and Wyndham. So learning a lot more about our neighbors and enjoying that, too. So Allison's covered quite a bit of what we do. I'm going to put a town report as you come in on that table. I do want to say that school funding, Allison covered it, it's quite daunting at the moment looking at it. I do want to say that I think there is a silver lining in that the talk in the State House, both on the House side and the Senate side, is that we really need to make some structural changes to how we fund schools. So I feel like it's going to be a hard thing to move through, but once we're moving through that, I'm hearing from legislators that we really need to make some hard decisions. So in the future, I think we're going to be talking about hard issues about school construction, pupil, teacher, class size, all sorts of issues like that. So it is difficult to talk about and to, and to understand, but I do really have confidence. One of the things that I've really learned in the last year and a bit is we have wonderful leadership in Montpelier, and the conversations that are going on all the time in the Senate and with Allison, Becca White, and Dick McCormick and myself, is how to make Vermont better. So I think that there's a road to making it fair and yet more equitable and transparent. I did want to just cover something that happened last year. We all voted, I voted to pass a bill for universal school meals, and what's really exciting about that, that's been implemented this year, and what's happening is the feds are also feeding into that, sorry for the pun, into that fund, and we're now having a farm-school relationship where some farmers are feeding our kids. So it's a real positive thing that happened, that I was able to see this year that was really exciting for me. Allison briefly mentioned data privacy. As some of you may know, I'm, in the House, we only have one committee, thank God, and mine is Commerce and Economic Development. So I sit on that, and we do a lot of things from what probably is very boring stuff, like captive insurance, insurance regulation, which is a whole new wheelhouse for me, and so I'm really learning a great deal. But this year, last year, we brought up a bill, H121, and it's all about data privacy, and we decided not to pass it this last year and to look at it again this year, and calling, bringing a better bill to the table. I think it's now 85 pages or something, and the Senate is really working, 13th or 15th year, depending on when we pass it, to pass quite a widespread data privacy. One thing that was really exciting to me is the bill, one of the differences from last year to this year is this year, we've included as private information, vain pattering. And, you know, you sit there and you go, what do my vain patterns have to do with anything? But what, it really is important, and this bill is going to be the, the foundation of how we move forward to protect citizens and data with AI. So it's just moving very quickly, and we're really looking at Colorado, California, the EU, and then trying to blend our bill with New England. So it's very fascinating, and I just wanted to tell you a little bit about that. Allison did mention the flood, the BAA, the Budget Adjustment Act, and Chester will be receiving an additional $225,000 from the state. It won't impact this budget, but it'll impact next year's budget because FEMA, it'll, we had the flood in July, and so usually our match is 10% at this point, but it'll only be 1%. So that'll be really helpful. I was really happy about that. I just want to say, one of the funnest times up there this year has been when the Chester Boy Scouts arrived in the state capital, and it was really great to see them, and their eyes were huge, and they were learning all sorts of stuff about Vermont history and what a pleasure it is when people come to visit. I'm available, I have my phone, I have my email here. I'm also doing a constituent meeting at the library in Chester, April 13th, from 9:30 to 10:30. I try to meet with you all every couple months at all, or at least. So please keep in touch, and thank you so much for this opportunity to serve you in this capacity.
Thanks. So we will continue with the warning, and I would say to you that if you don't have one, this is the report, the town report, that has all the information based on the reports, the warning for the meeting tonight, and I believe there are still copies in the back. If you don't have one, it, it has some really good information, including the warning. And we're now moving to Article Five. I'm going to read the, the article and ask for a motion and a second. And if you do want to speak to make a motion and, or give a second, I'm going to ask you to stand. We're going to need to have you speak into a microphone, which is somewhere in front of, in between Julie and Arnie. So Article Five, and as you do stand, please be recognized and state your name clearly. To see if the town will vote to raise $3,975,784 to be paid to the Chestertown Treasurer on September 16, 2024, to pay current expenses and any part of the town's indebtedness. Is there a motion on Article Five?
So prior to everybody...
Excuse me, could you state your name?
Oh, Jareen Slavinsky. Good morning, all. Prior to us voting on this, I just wanted to give you my input. I've only been here for 10 years, and we've been property owners...
Excuse me, you know, this, I would love to have you participate in the conversation, but before we can do that, we need to put the, the article on the floor...
Okay.
...with a motion and a second. So it's, you may speak after that is on the floor. If you'd like to move to put this article on the floor, you may, and then we'd ask for a second, and then we would ask for discussion, so...
Okay.
I'm making a motion.
And you are?
Evan Parks.
And what is your motion?
To put this, put Article Five on the floor.
All right, Evan Parks moves the motion. Is there a second on the motion? Seconded by...
Penny Benelli.
Moved and seconded by Penny Benelli and Evan Park to see if the town will vote to raise $3,975,784 to be paid to the Chestertown Treasurer on September 16, 2024, to pay current expenses and any part of the town's indebtedness. Is there any discussion of this Article Five?
Not sure how this works, but my husband and I love Vermont and chose to retire in Vermont, and we chose to retire in Chester. At the time, the property taxes were lower in Vermont than Connecticut, which is where we came from. Property taxes have now surpassed what we were paying in Connecticut, and listening to the select board members in meetings throughout this past year, it sounds like taxes are going to continue to increase with no end in sight. With, with the past few years of inflation, people of Chester are struggling to make ends meet. I am surprised that the select board members believe that raising taxes in order to not cut services and entice people, will entice people to want to move to Chester. Depending on which financial website you look at, the state of Vermont has the fourth to the sixth highest property taxes in the country. Depending, they are close to New Hampshire's property tax, and New Hampshire does not even have an income tax, and Vermont does. So people of Vermont are hit twice, property tax, and then again with an income tax. You talk about wanting more young people to come to live in Chester. The first thing young people look at is a good school system. Unfortunately, looking at the ratings of our school systems in Chester, it would not have enticed me to move here with young children. The second item is job opportunities. Without great-paying jobs, families can't afford to live here, and affordable housing is the third item. You can build affordable housing, but if our property taxes are high, that makes affordable housing not affordable over one's life. Although the overall mill tax rate was 6% last year, the municipality tax increase went from 8.8627 to 0.9277, which is a 7.5% increase. This year, you're asking for a municipality tax increase of 7%, which means a new mill rate of 0.9926. Again, this does not include the increase on the education mill rate. I've also heard in, you say in the select board meetings, that next year would be no different, meaning another hefty municipality tax increase. If this 7% passes this year, this is a 15% increase over two years, and if we have another 7% next year, that would be a 23% over three years. This does not include the tax increase for education. This is only the municipality. To me, this is not justifiable when most of us do not even utilize any of the Chester services, with the exception of the roads. Raising taxes, the town is taking away the opportunity for us citizens to help each other out, as now we will have less discretionary income to do so. The idea of voting in a town meeting on a budget that you do not outline the percentage increase that you are requesting is, to me, both inconsiderate and intimidating. Some people do not want to even say, they think, they, they don't want to know, they don't want to tell anybody that they're even here because everybody will know, and they don't want to go here and say, no, we're not going to vote for that. To me, it should be on the ballot, which is what most states do, so that voters have the privacy to express their desires without fear of ridicule. I propose that we vote no on this budget. This will give the select board an opportunity to go back and relook at it. Hopefully, they will lower the increase to make it more affordable to live in Chester. Thank you.
Further comments on the Article Five?
Bill, do you want my presentation now, or...
We're going to let Julie make her presentation at this point, so you're, you're the next one to do it.
Susan, if you could put the PowerPoint up.
Amy, you'll need to close the dialogue window.
Close this?
Yep. There you go. It's okay, you can see, you can, she can see it now. It's fine. It's good enough. So as usual, I do a presentation of where we went, where we've been in 2023, where we are proposing to be in 2024. I will start this by just simply talking about July. So July, for those of us who worked for, next slide, Susan, sorry. For those of us who were here during Tropical Storm Irene, the July flood was not a whole lot different. There were pieces that were not as bad, there were pieces that were worse. Chester's outlay at this point is two and a half months. What we have done is pulled those funds out of the general fund, so those do not affect your tax rate, as they will be reimbursable through FEMA at some point, but that is a long, a long road. FEMA, after post-Irene, FEMA changed their process of gaining money back, so the process is far more rigorous. After Irene, we were fully refunded within six months. Chester has 82 projects. I have six that have been obligated at this point. So we're in it for the long haul federally, but we are still working diligently, and I will get that money back into this town. At this point, all roads have been completed. There are several locations you probably have seen around town where this event, Chester's, one of our biggest impacts was to debris. Post-Irene, a lot of those debris piles were not allowed to be removed, therefore, the July flooding caused even more damage. This time around, we were able to receive permits from the state and have managed to get our approvals from FEMA to have that reimbursed. So there's been a lot of debris removal in the town. That gravel has been taken from the rivers and is put back into the town pit so that we can repurpose it back onto the roads in future years. There will be several large culvert update, upgrade projects, much like post-Irene, that we will hopefully be funded through FEMA 406, the mitigation program that FEMA sets forth for culverts that do not meet state regulation and have to be upsized. So we will be, in the next year to two years, Highway will be working on, on those upgrades, hopefully with FEMA funding. Next slide, Susan. I will say that, as you can imagine, outlaying 2.5 million in cash in a town the size of Chester cannot be just done. We do not have a bank account with that much money sitting in it, unfortunately. So the town did have to do a rather large current expense note that will be repaid as FEMA reimbursement money comes back into the town. So you will see things in the town report that talk about the current expense note. That's unusual for Chester, but we did have to do that this year so that we had the cash. Again, amazing work. I don't, I can't say it enough, Chester, and, and we are bragged about across the state, I can tell you, in several boards that I'm on. We have an amazing highway department, police, fire, ambulance, water, wastewater, managed to navigate this event very gracefully, efficiently, effectively. But even though they are an amazing crew, we do all sit down around a table and have conversations about how we can do things better when we have another flooding event, because we will have another flooding event. So how can we, how can we function better? How can we communicate with the community better? And there's lots of ways that we know that we can do that. Lot of new trainings, a lot of ideas around having databases of our most vulnerable population, having teams. We're working on developing a CERT team, and it's a group of certified individuals that are trained in emergency services, not to the level of police, fire, and ambulance, but they are trained to act in, in a way of blocking roads for us, working in conjunction with emergency services to run an event, to check on those vulnerable populations. And this is not just flooding. I mean, if you recall, two years ago, we had three days of no power in Chester. So there's all kinds of events that these types of teams would be beneficial for, and there's grant funding to help us establish them. So, you know, be on the lookout for some of those programs that Chester is going to start trying to implement over the next few years, you know, not really dollars to the taxpayer, but benefits and ways that community members can get involved in helping their neighbors, as we used to do years ago. So that's it for the flooding. I, I will move on to the actual budget, but I just want people to know that the flood has been pulled out of the general fund, so your general fund numbers do not reflect any numbers dealing with the July flooding or the flooding that we also had in December, because we're twice as lucky. So general government, Town Hall was busy as usual. We have amazing staff in Town Hall. You'll hear me saying that throughout. The biggest change this year is that Syl, our bookkeeper, retired. We are very happy for her. She will be greatly missed. Syl was a great asset to our team, but we replay, have replaced her with Lori Roser. You will see her sitting in that middle office. Lori comes with a tremendous amount of accounting background. She is proving to be a very valuable asset to our team. A lot of really great ideas kind of take... A lot of really great ideas, kind of taking our finances to a next step. And Lori will be working with me a fair amount this year and next year on the development of a true asset management plan and a true capital plan for Chester. We've been trying to do that. I've been trying to do that over the past year to two years, and it's just not enough hours in my day. So Lori will be able to help bring some insight to that, which is great. 2024 for the front office is obviously going to be busy, three major elections this year. So there will be a lot happening in Debbie and Amy's corner of the office. Moving on to planning zoning, Kathy and Preston are our, are our staff in planning and zoning, and we do have Val in the zoning, in the listers office as well. So the planning office, again, has been extremely busy, a lot going on in the zoning department this year. Permit issuance post-COVID climbed, and it has stayed there, which is good news. People are developing, and those developments raise the grand list. So while we always want to look at expense, we also want to look at raising the grand list. Those are equal contributors to your, to your budget. So the addition of the short-term rental policy in town, the Julie and Corey issues that we've been having, and the addition of a new housing commission in Chester to look at potential of affordable housing. Preston has been pretty, we've kept him on his toes this year. And with a lot of changing legislation in the, in how we function in our grand list program, the listers office is going to be very busy as well. With a CLA of 76%, you can anticipate that over the next couple of years, the town will, will be required to reappraise at some point very soon, I would imagine. So these two departments, which are the departments that essentially are the key to setting your tax base, are basically run by one full-time employee, a part-time employee, and then an employee who is a little bit less than part-time. One thing you will see in this budget, really the only add to this budget, other than what it just takes to run your town, is another full-time position. This position will be split between zoning and listers. To give them some relief in that office, those offices are, are very, very busy. And a lot of times, people don't understand the level of work that goes into those two departments, and they are the core of what sets your grand list. So that's where we want to make sure we have adequate staffing. So this budget does propose that. I also want to just give recognition to the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission, again, two boards that work very hard and deal with the zoning regulations in this town, they deal with the permitting of commercial business in this town. Again, really a big part of what is feeding that grand list and the growth and the plans for our community. This year, we did add, at the very end of 2023, we added a housing commission to Chester. This is really a great group of individuals, a group of go-getters, lot of interesting things that, conversations that are taking place around how to expand housing opportunities in Chester across the spectrum, from senior housing to affordable housing to workforce housing, all, all spectrums are being looked at, and they're coming up with some very creative ideas and ways to do that. They will have a booth at voting tomorrow, so I encourage you to sit down and talk to them. They have some information they will share and, and talk about how we can expand housing opportunities in our community. So we'll move on to public safety. Public safety is comprised of police, fire, ambulance for the town. Also a very busy year. This year, we added, if you'll recall, I think actually 2022, the Select Board added the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Police Department, and that has been a really great asset. I know that Chief Williams is working very closely with them, I attend most of the meetings, talking about ways that they can be the bridge between the community and the Police Department. Sometimes those conversations can be tense, and the CAC has been really effective in trying to reach out to the community and find ways to kind of be that bridge and to be that liaison. They have some work, they have a workshop coming up in April, where they're going to talk about establishing Neighborhood Watch programs. For those who may remember Neighborhood Watch programs, we always had them on the basis when I was growing up. So they'll be, they'll be looking to establish some really interesting programs throughout Chester as well. Chester Police Department is continuing, we are down a staff person, we are down a lieutenant position. We are continuing to look to find that position. That ad will be going back out very soon. To find somebody, we are taking our time, making sure that we are finding somebody that we feel is the perfect fit. Police has come a long way in the past year for Chester, really very heavy in a community policing approach. Chief Williams has been very active in that. I think, I hear a lot from a lot of people, the positive things coming from the Police Department that they love to see. I'm sure you, if you've driven through town lately, I'm sorry, you're probably seeing a lot more speed enforcement. It's great, it's long overdue, we need it. They are very active, they are very present in the community, and it's really kind of a welcomed, it's very welcomed in this town. We did add this year, Julie retired from the Police Department. We hired in Alicia De Petrio, again, an amazing hire. Alicia comes to us with a background in disaster management, and lucky for us, no, not so much for her, her first day of work was the day of the flood in July. So I'm sorry for Alicia, it was a tremendous asset for us, I can tell you. So a lot of interesting things will be coming from her, from her hire. Alicia just brings a tremendous, tremendous knowledge and skill set with her. The other thing we do, I know people have heard us talk a lot about Public Safety Department and overlapping skill sets within those three departments. So all of our police officers are now certified first responders. So if you unfortunately have an ambulance call, you will likely be visited first by Chester Police Officer, because they can get to you quicker, and ambulance is, will be right behind them. So this is, this has allowed us to use limited mutual aid and be able to respond quicker, faster, more effectively, more efficiently to Chester and Andover residents. So another good, another good movement forward. Fire Department this year responded to 255 calls, and I encourage you to read their reports, all of the departments' reports in the town report. Fire Department again saw some changes. Chief Matt William, Matt Wilson, retired at the end of 2023. Matt had been with Chester Fire for 28 years, so brought a lot, a lot to the Fire Department over the years, and did a lot to improve and grow that department in his, in his tenure. Currently, Ben Whalen is acting as the Fire Chief for Chester. Ben also has been with the Fire Department for many, many years, and brings a lot of experience and skills to the department. We are, as, as I always do, with any big change and somebody retires, we take a step back, we look at the position, what do we want it to be, where is this department going, so that we can make sure that whoever we bring in is the absolute perfect fit. When a position is vacant, is obviously the time to make changes. So we are taking a little bit of time evaluating that position and seeing what we want for that service. There has been consideration given, again, for the sake of efficiency. I mean, I think one thing that a lot of times people don't understand is, emergency services, especially in the state of Vermont, are really hard positions to fill, and there are departments that are often just kind of pushed off to the side, and they're not necessarily acknowledged until you need them. And this is one of the reasons why Chester has put in initiative to cross-train, so that we are basically regionalizing amongst ourselves. Regionalizing services in southern Vermont is very difficult, because your response times drop tremendously. If you live in West Chester and get responded to from Springfield for a structure fire, they will not get to you in time. So it's, regionalizing in southern Vermont is very challenging. All of that to say, one of the things that we are looking at in the fire case is, down the road, the potential of a full-time Fire Chief. Again, just being evaluated, just being looked at, what are the revenues that can offset the expense? We always look at that. To Doreen's point, always being mindful, we, we actually are very mindful of raising taxes, we don't just raise them. And figuring out the best way to run the departments for the town. And often, when you can add positions, you run things more efficiently, which actually in the long run saves money. So these are the things that we are trying to evaluate, and that is not proposed in this budget. Lot of research to still be done, but just something to be, that's being looked at. Onto ambulance, difficulties, as everybody knows, in the healthcare system these days. The Select Board did approve the creation of a community health initiative in 2023. I skipped over a page, I'm going to go back. So Chester Ambulance responded to 476 calls in 2023. Mike Ranzio, who I know you have all heard me mention before, Mike was promoted to the position of ambulance chief, which again, has proven to be a very positive addition to our service. Mike is, is young and energetic and a go-getter, and he has completed his advanced EMT, which allows us to bill at much higher rates when we bill those services. And the other thing it has done is Mike has gone and gotten his instructor certification. So most trainings for ambulance service are now done in-house, which means that when we add EMTs, that $1,300 does not go out of the town. That is saved dollars, and the training is done in-house. So that adds up, that adds up, and that equals dollars saved to the taxpayer. Another, another good addition. It's also allowing Chester Ambulance to do outside trainings. So they have done stop-the-bleed trainings at the schools. They have done AED trainings at several businesses and municipal buildings throughout town. If you have a business and want any of that training for your staff, please reach out to the ambulance department. Mike would be more than happy to set that up for you. But again, revenue dollars that can come back in to offset the expenses of the ambulance service. So with the declining healthcare system, the Select Board did, and we started entertaining the idea last year of establishing a community health program. This is where ambulance service is going in the future. This is, this is where that is headed. This is a discussion taking place on a national level because of the decline in healthcare. And I shouldn't say the decline in healthcare, I should say the, that healthcare is not so easily accessible, especially in rural Vermont. And those are based on facts and studies being done throughout the country. But the program is being developed, we are developing it now, again, trying to make it so that there are no dollars to the taxpayer. We have, Mike and I have a meeting this week with the partners from Springfield Hospital and most municipalities that have a community health program. They have partnered with their local hospital, who also helps provide funding for that program. So these are some of the things that we're looking, we're looking at, again, providing better quality coverage to the taxpayer without as many dollars. And, yeah, so as, as this program develops over the next few months, you can pay attention to those, to those updates as, as things come to fruition there. Moving on to public works, goes without saying, Highway's had a very busy year. Again, I'm, I'm just going to brag on our Highway crew. And I, and I will tell you, I am on different boards throughout the state, and I can tell you that there are, there are, I, I hear from people about how amazing our Highway Department is. I actually hear that from other town managers. So it's not just me bragging on my guys, it's, it's a real thing, and we are known for it. So aside from flooding, material costs just keep rising. Kirby came in closer to the end of last year to tell me that that plow blades tripled all of a sudden. And so what do you do? I mean, I'd be happy to cut that line and not plow your roads, but I don't think you'd be happy with me if we did that. So these expenses are climbing, and they're not stopping. So while we fully appreciate, believe me, there is a big concern about sustainability of budgets. But Highway is a department that we can't cut. So it is, it is real to say that for a town of 3,000 people, Chester has the third largest number of dirt road miles in the state. We have, I think, the most bridges per capita at 78, thousands of culverts. And that's just, that's Chester. And so we get as much funding as we can to help offset that work, but it is a burden that we have to carry, because that is just how Chester was built. So Highway, I just went on a tangent. Highway this year completed several projects. Again, we are always looking at large structures grant funding, grants and aid, better backroads. There's a lot of state funding that comes in, we get for any culvert bridge that we possibly can, to help offset those costs. And we are fortunate, I will say, in that our guys build bridges, and most municipalities do not have highway departments that build bridges, and we do. So that is a tremendous savings to our taxpayers, year after year after year. And so many, I will say though, too, many of the projects this year were delayed and will be happening next year because of the flood. 2024, the main projects that we will be completing in 2024 are going to be a large culvert replacement on Green Mountain Turnpike that was pushed off, ditch work on Amston Hill Road, again, grant-funded, we are finally going to get Andover Road paved, $200,000 grant from the state for that, and that will also replace all the cross-culverts under Andover Road. Again, with the assistance of large structures grant funding, two bridges on Wyman's Falls will be redone, and the one on, and one on Smokesure, again, bridges built by our Highway Department, with grant funds that will offset the labor and materials cost. Hopefully, additional culvert upsizing will happen with FEMA funds. And we did, last year in '23, receive a grant from the state for scoping study of a sidewalk to the high school. That's been a question and a, and a desire of the community, and for my 19 years of working here, we, I've been hearing about that. So we did get a grant to perform that scoping study for that sidewalk addition. And in 2024, you will see the new signage start popping up. There was a grant received to complete a wayfinding study back in 2022, and paid for the signage itself, so that signage will start seeing pop up in the spring. Moving on to recreation, I'm getting there. Although completed in 2022, I still like to highlight, the Brookside Trail is finally done, and is a great asset, very, very heavily used, in-town hiking trail behind the Academy Building. If you've never been up there, I suggest you do, it's a great, about a mile, about a mile hike. Chester Conservation Committee, our commission should be thanked for their work on that, blazing that trail, laying out that trail, it's a fabulous addition. Rec Department this year completed their four new dugouts. The old dugouts, we actually had to shut down last year because the walls were caving in on the side, we couldn't put the kids in them. So those dugouts were replaced this year. Chester Community Garden was up and running their first year this year, and my understanding, it was, it was very successful. If anybody wants a plot, I would suggest you reach out to Cheryl Joy Lipton, and she can get you connected with that, with that work. Another big project completed, Green Mountain Power, finally completed the electric project up at the Pinnacle, a bunch of power lines were buried, that was a GMP project. But because they did that project, the town had to upgrade the pool or the pump to the pool house because of the phasing. Either we were one and needed three or I don't know, something. Anyway, it's electrical. We had to replace the pump at the poolhouse. But all that electric now up on the green has been, up on the pinnacle has been buried, which is nice. The ice rink moved from its dilapidated rundown wooden boards over to the basketball court with some new composite boards put up. Much more popular, been able to be used longer, even though we haven't had a great winter for it. But good decision and much less expensive. The old rink, there is conversation about pouring an asphalt slab. There is a group in town who has been very vocal about wanting some pickleball courts. And so that would be a good location for pickleball courts. And the Select Board this year is going to be looking at class four roads throughout town with the potential of seeing which of those could be used or are marked and identified and advertised as additional potential hiking trails. So there'll be work that the Select Board does on that during 2024. And again, just want to thank Matt McCarthy for all of his work in the rec department. We have beautiful rec facilities in Chester. Another thing that is talked about often at different meetings I'm at. And a draw, the small families or the young families that do move here. It is often because of our rec facilities. And that is told to me frequently. So moving on to facilities. So the library budget, you will see in this budget. The library budget is showing an increase of a couple thousand dollars. This is to provide retirement benefits to the two full-time library staff. They are allowed to join the municipal retirement system, VEMRs, for the state. So this would provide that match for them. 2024 is going to bring, start bringing some improvements to the sprinkler system at the library. And grants are being applied for, for 2024 to improve ADA accessibility within the library building and access to the library building. So hopefully, we will get some funding there and some work will get done to the inside of the library. Improvements are still continuing to the downstairs conference room. That should be up and running very soon. This building is actually getting very, very busy with meetings and events and yoga classes and kids wrestling and all kinds of stuff going on here. So we are refinishing that space downstairs. Smaller meetings, standard Select Board meetings, planning commission DRB. Those types of meetings will be downstairs so that the upstairs can be used as an actual event space. There are a group of individuals in town who are working hard to, again, potentially seek some grant funding to do some improvements so that there can be actual events in this space as there was years ago. For the rec facilities, the rec budget does not include a lot or minor repairs to the poolhouse that need to be done and some improved material on the baseball fields that will help make it so that they last a little bit longer and don't need work every year to them. Historic facilities, grant was secured for the windows at Yosemite. If you've driven by Yosemite lately, you see that those windows are boarded up. They have been removed. They're brought back to the gentleman's shop and refinished and repaired there. Those will be reinstalled late spring, early summer. We did, we were the beneficiary of several energy grants that are coming through the state's ARPA funds. Three rounds, two rounds have opened. One was an energy audit. We had an energy audit done of Town Hall, the Academy Building and the library. When I get those reports, I will certainly make them available. They will feed a third round of funding that municipalities are eligible to apply for $500,000, no match, to make energy improvements and ADA accessible improvements to municipal buildings. So we will certainly go after that funding as soon as it is announced. And the Select Board, I don't have a lot to share about it, but the Select Board is also this year for facilities looking at the potential purchase of the solar field on the Jeffrey Wells site. That field does produce enough energy to apply electricity for all municipal buildings. We have completed a preliminary ROI, finally, for the purchase of that. And it is very profitable for the town to move in that direction. So those discussions are just beginning as far as negotiation, but that is work that the Select Board has been doing and will continue to do the early part of '24. Just a list of some grants that we received in '23. New AEDs for all the municipal buildings, training equipment for ambulance service, municipal planning grant to conduct a housing feasibility study on the town-owned land where the secondary well site or the backup well tank is, the dwell tank? Yeah, water tank, water tank, is on 103 South. Scoping study for the sidewalk, body cams for PD, digital signboards, mobile daddy units for PD, paving parking at Copley. And we just received the Urban and Community Forestry Grant that will allow us to start making some implementations to the canopy management plan established back in, I think, 2018. So for 2023 budget wrap-up, I guess, I, no surprise, 2023 budget was a hard budget to manage as all of our household budgets are. So was the municipal budget. Continually rising costs. It's hard to know how to keep costs down. Due to the cost overruns, the town did end this year with a deficit. We ended with a deficit of just about $12,000. That is, of course, an unaudited number. But given, that is a budget deficit, I should say, but given the volatility of all consumer markets, it's a pretty minimal amount. 2024 budget increase. Again, not an easy budget to put together with the volatility of the markets. It's, the budget hit, the rising cost has impacted every budget across the board. So department managers, we have gone through, reviewed everything that we can, looked at just projects that need to be done and really tried our best to keep this budget as low as possible with the existing services that are in place. So the largest increase that you will see in this budget is if we recall, when we voted the Public Safety Building three years ago, that repayment plan, or four years ago, that repayment plan was that it deferred principal for three years. 2024 is the first year that principal payment becomes due. And that principal payment adds $176,000. So not wanting that to hit in one year and looking at reserve funds that the town does have, the board did agree to take half of that from existing ARPA funds so that we will step into that principal payment. So this year, you are seeing an $88,000 increase for one-half of that principal payment. 2025 will make the full transition. And we, the board, I feel that is the best way to make that swing. With that, with the principal payment combined, this budget is up about 7%. If you take that swing out, the operational expense only is up 5%. Is the best way to explain that. But it does mean that yes, in 2025, there is going to be automatically another $88,000 increase because we have to get to where we are making that full payment. We have continued to review all positive fund balances across any reserve funds to see where we can take from. There are public funds that are being used to pay for the cemetery mower this year, so that is not taxpayer-based. ARPA funds are being used.
It's got an interruption here.
Can someone on Zoom please mute themselves?
Figure out who it is and just, thank you. I know.
Oh, they quieted down.
Yep, she probably got him, she found him. The capital fund balance is being used to pay off the last two payments on a highway loan. So again, those funds did not have to be raised. And I just, you know, considerable amount of attention is being paid. The town does not have the attitude of we don't care about raising taxes. If we are keeping the services for Chester at the level that we provide now, this is what it takes to provide that. There is no fluff. There is no extra. This is simply what it takes to run this town with the way that we are now. Getting into capital plan, I will just say the ads this year are the replacement of the dump truck. This is the dump truck, one of the ones that does salt. So it is on a five-year rotation. This is the year that that dump truck needs to be replaced. The chipper is up for replacement this year. The guys have rigged and fixed and repaired and welded that as many times as they can over the past 20 years. It's time to replace the chipper. You will see that the capital items, while we would normally just borrow from a commercial lending institution, bond rates right now are drastically lower. So everything is on the ballot as a bond. And that's the reason for that. It's just simply because those interest rates are significantly less. There is a $380,000 bond that is, includes the match for paving Andover Road. And that is the match for the grant for Green Mountain Turnpike, the large culvert replacement there. Again, a grant for paving for $200,000, but there is a match that is required. And then there was a $200,000 grant for Green Mountain Turnpike's culvert. But again, we also have a match to those two pieces. And then the other thing you're going to see is the ambulance. Our ambulance is, they are on a 10-year cycle. Our ambulance, I think, is 12 years old, 12 or 13 years old at this point. You will, you may recall, if you voted last year, that the paving and the ambulance were on the ballot last year and were approved. There was a glitch and in the advertising, bonds are very, very specific. Before you can go out for a bond of the advertising, there was a step inadvertently missed. And so we were not able to secure those bonds last year. So we have to revote them in 2024. These are not another ambulance and another paving project. It is the same projects from last year that were approved. We just have to redo it. In case anybody caught that and is wondering. So I, again, to the general fund, we've worked really hard to keep this budget as low as we can. Again, if you want the existing services that we have now, which is the message that has been given to us, then this is just what it is to run this town. There are conversations that I think we have already alluded to that we are going to have this coming year about services that we provide and services that we offer. We all are fully aware that inflation, the way it is, budgets increasing, not just the towns, are increasing at rates that are not sustainable long-term. I think we all know that, we all feel that. And so it is a serious conversation that we will be spending 2024 talking about, looking at, how can we do things better? Are there things to cut? And we're going to be looking for community input on that. If you want to cut services, what are you cutting? Every cut is going to have a major impact. So we're going to be looking for community feedback on that before any real decisions are made. That can't be made in a vacuum by five people sitting at a table. That needs to be made with community input. And unfortunately, Select Board meetings, there's really no community input. So there will be some workshops that we've talked about doing throughout the year and looking at budgeting in a different way, given that I'm not confident that the rate of inflation is going to settle anytime soon. But we'll see. Aside from the general fund, we do have water, wastewater. I'll just touch on those quickly. Again, very important parts of infrastructure. And I will say real quick, if you want your town to grow, you've got to have good infrastructure. And that all costs a significant amount of money. Chester has good infrastructure. And as Ariana has pointed out and a few times that she has spoken at various things, we have great infrastructure. So now it's time to put that infrastructure to work and work on economic development, work on housing improvement opportunities for our community, work on those pieces. Because Chester does have a lot to offer when it comes to infrastructure. We've put a lot of time, intentional time and money over the years into that. So this will be another year also, as Ariana has alluded to, focused on growth of the town. Water sewer budgets, again, not voted on at town meeting, not part of your general fund, but a very valuable part of the town's infrastructure. Both departments have positive fund balances. Those are enterprise funds, so they operate a little different than a general fund. They will see rising increases. We are gradually increasing water sewer rates as well because like any other department and any other household, they are seeing rising costs as well. Some projects in those departments, again, grant-funded. Secondary well, we have one well for town. So we are looking at its backup. So we are securing, funding has been secured to do the research on that secondary grant that is taking place now. Funding was also received to complete lead line inventory. The state of Vermont required all municipalities to assess any lead lines within their town. We're very happy to report that Chester had only a very small handful, I think, seven service lines that are still led from, that are still led, service lines from the main line to somebody's property. So funding will be coming to help those property owners replace those lead lines. So town will not have much work to do in that category. And funding was completed for an asset management plan for the wastewater system. We did one for water a couple of years ago. This is based water. It will identify upcoming needs, one of which is a new force main on Depot Street. And the force main and the pump station need replacement. They are severely outdated and we are identifying leaks in that force main. Application has been made for funding through the state to help with that as well. So again, I think I speak on behalf of the board when I say, you know, we do feel that this is a responsible budget, given the time that we are in in our country. It is not reasonable to think that you're going to see increases everywhere else and a municipal budget not be impacted. It's going to be. And unless there are significant services cut, this is the budget that it takes to run this town. So we do ask for your support in the budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we've had the report of the town manager. And I will open the floor to anyone who has any questions or comments about Article 5. I know that we have about 21 people who are here on Zoom. The people who are attending by Zoom may ask a question if they would like, if they will raise their hand, but they can't vote. So we have a pretty good turnout on Zoom. Are there any questions on Article 5? There being no questions, then we will vote to see if the town will raise $3,975,784 to be paid to the Chester Town Treasurer on September 16, 2024 to pay current expenses in any part of town's indebtedness. All in favor of Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.
The motion... The motion has been adopted, the article passes. Before we go to Article 6, I want to point out something. In the town report on page 38 is an article about the Citizens Advisory Committee. There's a cue code. If you look at the cue code with your phone, there's a questionnaire to fill out. And you are requested to take a look and fill out the questionnaire and return it to Town Hall. So take a look at page 38, the cue code, and see if you'd like to respond to that. We go to Article 6. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $13,807 to help support the home health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a motion on Article 6? Yes, ma'am. And you are? Lee Dakin moves Article 6. Is there a second in Article 6? Yes, ma'am. And seconded by Chris Winicki to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $13,807 to help support the home health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided in patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 6? The few of you who are raising your hands in the back door are about ready to be. There being no further discussion, we will now vote to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $13,807 to help support the home health, maternal and child health and hospice care provided to patients' homes and in community settings by the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor of Article 6, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 6 passes. Article 7. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,044 to help support outpatient and mental health and substance abuse services by the staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitation Services, Inc., HDRS, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 7? All right, Jeff Hans moves Article 7, seconded by Lee Dakin. Moved and seconded to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $3,044 to help support outpatient and mental health and substance abuse services by the staff of Healthcare and Rehabilitative Services, Inc., in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? All in favor of Article 7, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 7 passes. Article 8. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $3,040 to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFCa, to assist Chester in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 8? And you are? Tim Roper moves and seconded by? Moved and seconded. We got it. Is there any, to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $3,040 to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFCa, to assist Chester in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 8? There being no discussion, we'll vote to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $3,040 to Southeastern Vermont Community Action, SEFCa, to assist Chester in responding to the emergency needs of the community and providing all available and applicable services to families and individuals in need, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 8 passes. Article 9. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $900 to the Women's Freedom Center for General Budget Support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical and/or sexual, sexual abuse in our residents of the town, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there a motion on Article 9? Yes, ma'am. And you are? Moved and seconded by? Moved and seconded to see if the town of Chester will appropriate the sum of $900 to the Women's Freedom Center for General Budget Support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical and/or sexual abuse in our residents of the town, in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 9?
Bill?
Yes, sir.
I, I just would like to.
You see, you are?
Arnie Janinas.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention that usually as we've gone through the years on articles like this, we've always had the petitions come in and the articles were presented. And we've always asked that there would be someone from the organizations to be speaking towards their needs and give us a summary of what's going on. And we have asked this year, but it doesn't seem like we're getting much response. I mean, the articles that pertain, that we're voting on now, they're important to the town because I think it tells what we are as a town and where we're spending some of the money on these organizations that are needed for the town and they're, they service the town well and they're very important for the town. I just wish that there, these folks that are on these different boards and different organizations would somehow get messages to us to give us a little more information when it came to voting on these things for the town. I, I fully support them, but I think it would be helpful to make these votes, to have someone there representing their organization.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on Article 9? There being none, we will vote to see if the town shall appropriate the sum of $900 to the Women's Freedom Center for General Budget Support to provide services to women and their children who are experiencing emotional, physical and/or sexual abuse in our residents of the town, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor of Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 9 passes. Article 10. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the Support of Senior Solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, for help to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 10? Sue Willis moves the article? Chris Winicki seconds. So the article is on the floor to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200, $1,200 for the Support of Senior Solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, for help to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 10? Yes, ma'am. And you are, excuse me? So I will let you with the microphone in hand, repeat what you said and continue on.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that your wish is my command. My name is Joanne Ehrenhouse. I work for Senior Solutions and I live here in Chester. Been here for a couple of years and I couldn't have picked a nicer community to move to. Another employee here is Sue Willis. Thank you, she's one of our case managers who works diligently for those who are 60 and older and need help. Well, you have our summary on page 107, but I would like to add just a couple of other interesting tidbits to what we do. Won't take up a lot of time, but we also have something that's called the Foxy Fund. I don't know how many of you have pets, but according to statistics, Vermont is one of the states that has the largest number of pet owners. 77% of Vermonters own a pet. And we have a program that we help to facilitate, which is Meals on Wheels. And within the last year, we were able to receive several grants from PetSmart and the Meals on Wheels Foundation to provide pet food for those who are receiving Meals on Wheels, who are really vulnerable and they can barely afford to feed themselves. They've been sharing their lunches with their dogs and cats and goats, you name it. We fed turtles and parakeets. So right now we have one of the offices and the adjacent hallway stuffed with pet food that we get delivered in 50-pound bags and we break them down and our volunteers take them to the Meals on Wheels Centers where the actual meals are provided and distributed to people. And Meals on Wheels delivery volunteers take the pet food to all of the Meals on Wheels recipients who check the box and say, yes, please, I would like extra food for my pet. And they have to tell us what kind of pet it is, so we give the right kind of food. We don't want to give bird seed to turtles, it won't work. Anyway, that's one thing. And the other thing I need to stress is that we have recently opened a Memory Cafe here in Chester. It's just started back in January and it happens every first Thursday of the month. And it's held so if you or anybody you know has a loved one suffering from dementia, Parkinson's or Alzheimer's, they are more than welcome to show up every first Thursday of the month. It's absolutely free. We have the greatest volunteers who help to keep an eye on the loved ones so that the family caregivers can sit together, share experiences and support. And we provide resource materials, we facilitate discussions. Next, we are having the next one, obviously, this coming Thursday from 11 to 1:00. And we serve really good refreshments. And I put several copies of the full schedule of several. We have Memory Cafes here in Chester. We have one in Ludlow by a community partner, which is the Black River Good Neighbors. And that's being run by our retired volunteer coordinator. March 21st, we have one in Wilmington at the Old Firehouse, that's just starting up. March 25th, we have one in Brattleboro at the American Legion. That's been going on for two years. And as this, as a note, I want to let everyone know that Memory Cafes are nonjudgmental places where caregivers share experiences, support one another, know that their loved ones are being watched and cared for so they can relax. And most important, all the caregivers need to know, they are not alone. So please share this information because it's just the tip of the iceberg. There are some, over 30,000 caregivers, family caregivers who are currently caring for about 15,000 loved ones who have some form of dementia in Vermont. It's a huge impact on our population and we're trying very hard to give them as much support as we can. Thank you. Oh, forgot to tell you, these are out on the table. So if you want to pick one up for reference, please do and share the information. Oh, yeah, and we, thank you, Sue reminded me. Our annual report is out on the table as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this article?
I'm Mary Simonas and I definitely support the Foxy program. I have had acquaintances that have head issues and needs for their pets and they've found support. So thank you.
Further discussion? There being no further discussion, we'll vote to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $1,200 for the Support of Senior Solutions, formerly Council on Aging for Southeastern Vermont, for helping to support seniors and their families who are trying to remain at home and not be placed in a nursing home, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 10 passes. Article 11. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $2,250 for the Support of Mover Rockingham to provide transit services to the residents of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 11? And you are? Tucker Ben Wonderley moves Article 11. Is there a second? Seconded by? Robin Bickle seconds. Moved and seconded to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $2,250, $2,250 for the Support of the Mover Rockingham to provide transit services to the residents of the town of Chester, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion on this Article 11? There being no discussion, we'll now vote to see if the town of Chester will appropriate the sum of $2,250 for the Support of the Mover Rockingham to provide transit services to the residents of the town of Chester, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor of Article 11, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 11 passes. Article 12. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $800 to support Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to children in Windsor County, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 12? Lois Perla moves, seconded by? And seconded? To see if the town will appropriate $800 to support Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to children in Windsor County, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 12? There being no discussion, we will vote to see if we will appropriate the sum of $800 for the Support of Windsor County Mentors for youth mentoring services provided to children in Windsor County, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Article 12 passes. Article 13. Shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $400 to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people aged 55 and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Chester through volunteer service, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 13? Kathy Garantino moves and seconded by? I think we'll take Lois, she's the first to raise her hand. So Lois Perla seconds.
Lois.
Lois Perla. To see if we will discuss the motion of the article to appropriate the sum of $400 to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people aged 55 and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Chester through volunteer service, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion of this Article 13? There being none, we'll vote to see if we. There being none, we'll vote to see if we will appropriate the sum of $400 to Green Mountain RSVP and Volunteer Center of Windsor County to develop opportunities for people age 55 and older to positively impact the quality of life in the community of Chester through volunteer service in accordance with 24 VSA 2691. All in favor of Article 13 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 14, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,800 toward the support of Community Cares Network of Chester and Andover, Inc., a nonprofit organization which provides services to senior citizens, helping them to stay in their homes longer safely in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691. Is there a motion on this article?
I'm David Armstrong. I will submit the article.
Moved by David Armstrong and seconded by?
Nancy Lindsay.
Nancy Lindsay. Article 14 is on the floor to see if we will appropriate the sum of $1,800 toward the support of Community Cares Network of Chester and Andover, Inc., a nonprofit organization which provides services to senior citizens, helping them to stay in their homes longer safely in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691. Is there any discussion on Article 14? Yes, ma'am. And you are?
I was just confused yet. What difference was between this organization and Senior Solutions?
Why don't you go ahead and use the mic and repeat that, please?
I was just confused on what's the difference between this organization and Senior Solutions? Because Senior Solutions has given us a lot of reasons to vote yes. This organization's not even here?
We are.
Oh, you are. Can you tell us without you?
So, does anybody have an answer to the question? If you pick up the microphone, David, and speak. No, no, David, pick the microphone.
David Armstrong.
Microphone.
David Armstrong. I'm a volunteer for Community Cares Network. We do a lot of volunteer services for senior citizens, a lot of transporting people to doctor's appointments, to hospital appointments, to various appointments in the community. We also, yes, my wife.
I'm Debbie Armstrong.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We also make connections. We do make connections with, in fact, there's a case manager that I've worked with very closely with a difficult situation. When we had the storm, so we didn't have power for, what, three, three days in the winter? And if you are an elderly person, you can't get out, you don't have power, you have no telephone, some of our volunteers would actually, if it was safe, walk. They literally get out of their car, walk through the snow, or whatever, to check on that person, to see if they need something. If they do, and we can help, we will do that. They also said something about Foxy Fund. If you're an elderly person, that pet is like a child. They are not going to leave their home if they have to leave their pet. So, we had different things that, what do they call those, solar blankets? We were able to give those. We do, there's a long list. We also have a person, I guess I'd say, lives off the grid. There's one place in his house that he can have cellphone. That's it. He's going in for an operation. His family lives out of state. They called. We were able to call and talk to him and reassure him that we will check on him. As he said, "I don't want to be upside down when I get home." So, sometimes it's just assurance. So, I hope that answers some.
Any further questions on Article 14?
Sue Willis, I am a case manager at Senior Solutions, and I will tell you, Deb has been a godsend, I don't know how many times, for clients that we've worked with. So, we deal with a lot of the medical. All of our clients are long-term Medicaid, and so we work on hooking up the home health services and, but volunteer rides for people that can't hook up with the mover, taking them to haircuts, taking them to, oh, my God, Deb, they called in a panic, and I just, I'm on the road all day long, can you please just go check on them? Stuff like that. You guys have been awesome. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without you guys, so thank you for that.
Robin Bickle. I'm Robin Bickle. And one of my understandings of Chester, yeah, Chester Cares and Andover Cares is it's one of a network, lots of towns have them, and you're kind of the on-the-ground, actually go check on the people, whereas the other, Senior Solutions does a lot of the, I don't want to say paperwork, because you do more than that, but the Chester Cares is our local, on-the-ground, neighbor-to-neighbor response.
I typically, I typically check in on my people once a month, and anytime I need anything, I call Deb and go, "Hey, Deb, can you check on them for the fifth time today?"
Further comments on this point? Then we will, not seeing any more comments or questions, vote on Article 14 to see if we will appropriate the sum of $1,800 towards the support of Community Care Network of Chester and Andover, Inc., a nonprofit organization which provides services to senior citizens, helping them to stay in their homes longer safely in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691. Is there a motion on Article 14? There is a motion. Is there, all in favor of Article 14? I was thinking that we might be so happy that we're not talking about cemetery loss in tonight's, so I was confused. All in favor of Article 14 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 14 passes. Article 15, to see if the town of Chester will appropriate the sum of $3,000 to assist in the services of the Chester-and-Over Family Center for individuals and families in need in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691. Is there a motion on Article 15? By? Seconded by? Lee Daken. Moved and seconded to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $3,000 to assist in the services of the Chester-and-Over Family Center for individuals and families in need in accordance with 24 VSA 2691. Is there any discussion on Article 15? I'm going to let Chris, I'm going to let Chris speak into the microphone.
Hi, I'm Chris Winnicky, and I'm the president of the Chester-and-Over Family Center. And this last year, we saw a 45% increase in the number of visits to the food shelf in Chester. We've helped provide food for 455 individuals in Chester and Andover. And in addition to our food shelf, we also have a financial assistance program, and we helped with 47 requests for financial assistance, mostly for home heating oil, an electric bill, rent, or car rentals. All of those were emergency cases where people found that they just couldn't afford it. And if we are not able to help someone completely with a bill, we can oftentimes refer them to other organizations to make up for the difference. I also wanted to thank our 60-plus volunteers and all of those, all of you who have donated to our thrift shop, as well as those who've donated food and personal goods to our food shelf. Thank you for attending our Empty Bowl and supporting our annual fund. Those are our primary sources of getting funding in addition to what the town gives us. Two big things happened this year. These were both a long time in coming. And the first was, we have hired our first employee. We wanted to open our thrift shop for more days and more hours and needed more than just volunteers, so we hired a gentleman. His name is Mike Antonowitz, and he's absolutely delightful. So, come into the thrift shop and introduce yourself and meet our new thrift store manager. The other big thing that we did this year, also a long time in coming, is that we put an addition onto our building, so we can now finally hold all of your donations instead of having to turn you away. So, we're pretty excited about those things. So, keep your eyes out for the thrift store, having more hours, times open. Right now, we have prom dresses. We'll probably be having a bag sale at the end of the month, and spring clothes will be coming out in April. Stop by and say hi to Mike and come see our new addition. And finally, of course, tonight, I'm here in hopes that you will vote for this article in the affirmative, and I think this is the reason why we all live in Chester, because we help our neighbors when they need it most. Thank you.
Any further comments? Or questions on this Article 15? There being no further questions or comments, we'll vote to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $3,000 to assist in the services of Chester-and-Over Family Center for individuals and families in need in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 15 passes. Article 16, shall the town of Chester appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield, Inc., for continued support and services to the citizens of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there a motion on Article 16? Nancy Lindsay moves the article and is seconded by? Seconded by Lee Daken. Audio is faster than motion. To see now, as we place Article 16 on the floor, if the town will appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield, Inc., for continued support and services to the citizens of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 16? There being no discussion, we will then vote to see if we will appropriate the sum of $4,000 to Meals on Wheels of Greater Springfield, Inc., for continued support and services to the citizens of the town of Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 16 passes. Article 17, shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Neighborhood Connections, Inc., to cover the cost of providing services in Chester in accordance with 24 VSA Section Is there a motion on Article 17? Penny Benelli moves and seconded by? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any, to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Neighborhood Connections, Inc., to cover the cost of providing services in Chester to, in accordance with 24 VSA Section 2691? Is there any discussion on Article 17? There being no discussion, then we will vote to see if we will appropriate the sum of $1,500 to Neighborhood Connections, Inc., to cover the cost of providing services in Chester in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 17 passes. Article 18, shall the voters of Chester authorize an annual community appropriation of $4,070 to endorse the Mountain Town Connector, a service providing free transportation to residents of Chester? Is there a motion on Article 18? Yes, ma'am. Moved by Ms. Benelli, seconded by? Moved and seconded to see if we will authorize an annual community appropriation of $4,070 to endorse the Mountain Town Connector. Is there any discussion on Article 18? Yes, ma'am. Kathy, wait till you have the mic, if you would, please.
Mountain Town Connector is what I was, we're discussing. Okay, good, then you can answer my question. Okay, I'm Kathy Giratino, and I've never heard of this, so I just wondered how many people in Chester use it and what it does.
So, if we can pass the microphone, and if you can state your name again.
Hi, my name is Nicole Wangard. I am the director of Neighborhood Connections. I've been there, ooh, four years now. I was a social worker 10 years ago. I left for eight years, and Dolores Dr. Barbe drug me back as the director a couple of years ago. So, great question. The Mountain Town Connector, it is, it was a pilot project. We got a grant from the Holt Fund about two and a half years ago. We said, "We think transportation is an issue in our rural towns. We're going to buy a van, and we're going to see, you know, see if this is something, a program that sticks." So, we're about six months, June is the end of that three-year pilot project. On average, this last year, through all of our towns, we provide about 122 ride requests a month, just over 15, just under 1,500 for the year. So, we're very London-dary heavy this year. It was about, they provide about 60% of our rides. Chester is our second town, so we provide 15% of our rides go to Chester residents. That's about, there were about 31 residents, about 70% of those were repeat riders. What else can I tell you? 45% of those rides were for medical appointments, 22% were for food security and essential items. Most of them are individual appointments. I can tell you the difference between us and the mover. I know, we had, we had some, we had a flurry of activity on the forums. So, I should also say, you know, being here at the town hall meetings, I love Town Hall Meeting Day, because it really shows that it takes a village, you know? And so, we partner with the mover very closely. They're a phenom. One of the big differences between us and the mover, the mover will provide a ride. We don't have any income or age criteria. We will give anyone a ride that needs it. We also, the mover will take you, in our towns that we serve, the mover will take you to your house, to your medical appointment and home. In some towns, they also do additional grocery trips and things. In our towns, they do not offer that service. We will take you wherever you want to go. We prioritize medical appointments always, and we always try to utilize state resources first. So, if you qualify for the mover and it's appropriate, we try to use that service first. If there's some other reason why that's not appropriate, then we would, you know, kind of jump in. We really like to make sure that, once we get folks out of the house, that we, you know, bundle that ride, right? Let's go to your doctor's appointment, let's stop at the pharmacy, pick up your prescription. Did you stop at the grocery store? Let's do that, too. And, you know, we're, we also provide a door-through-door service, so we're not going to just drop you off at the door and say, "Okay, we'll see you in three hours." Our drivers stay with you, which is a big deal for a lot of our folks. You're going to have the same driver, you're going to build a relationship, you're going to know that person, you're going to feel comfortable calling them to, you know, for other appointments or other, you know, transportation needs. And we also offer a door-through-door service in that we're not going to drop you off at the door. We will walk you into your appointments. We will stay there, communicate with the doctors. All of our drivers have phones that they can, you know, numbers that they can give to folks, let them- to folks, let them know, hey, if, you know, when the appointment's done, the doctor can call me directly. I'll make sure I come here, receive this person, get them to the car, get them home safely. We have a lot of folks, we have a lot of kids that live out of state that call us about their parents that now live up here alone, concerned. My mom has, you know, eye surgery, I'm not able to get up, I want to make sure that she gets home safely. Can you make sure you get her into her room and, you know, settle before she leaves? Absolutely. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of in a nutshell. So we're, we're coming to the end of our funding, so our sustainability plan, we are asking our 10 towns that we serve for transportation to make up 20% of the overall cost of the program, so we're trying to spread that out. So what we came up with this appropriation was, you know, what's the usage? What's the average usage? So that's how we came up with the number. I know it's, it's a big number, but it's been, you know, the program has been transformative. It's so much more than transportation. We're providing rides to exercise programs, to, you know, Tai Chi, to bone builders, to our community meal. It's just, you know, it's been a really incredible program, so I, it's, it's worth it. That's why I'm here. Any other questions? Yeah.
Could you please give him the microphone? I apologize.
Hi, this is Steve Doc. Is the van ADA accessible?
It sure is. Yes. Three months of community conversation, the one thing that came out of it was, there has to be a lift on the back. So we have a lift. The van, when our program, so our program expanded 300% from 2022 to 2023. So one van, it became very clear, one van was not going to cut it. So we transitioned our program. Our van is still in use, but our drivers, we have five drivers, part-time drivers, that use their own vehicles. So you will not always see the van, you will see, our drivers are using their own vehicles. It's also way more fuel-efficient to get to Dartmouth in a car than a van.
Further questions, comments? Yes.
Evan Parks, can you just remind us your overall yearly budget and the towns you serve?
So, just transportation, the whole, the whole Neighborhood Connections? This program. So we serve 10 towns. Londonderry is the center of that. You are, Chester is as far east as we go. And the overall program budget, including drivers and our front desk staff and our program coordinator, is $110,000. Oh, towns, okay. Ooh, you're going to test me. Here we go. Londonderry, starting at the top, Weston, Weston, Londonderry, Peru, Land Grove, Winhall, Wyndham, Chester. Andover, thank you. And Stratton is the one that we just recently added. Who am I forgetting? Jamaica. We don't serve Grafton. You know, we reached out, we, we thought about adding Grafton, but Grafton has a phenomenal cares group, much like yours, it sounds like, and they, you know, they said they had it. And we don't, you know, we like to collaborate, we don't want to step on toes, and we said, "Okay." Yes, I think there was another one back there, too.
Evan Parks again. I just want to know, if you live in Chester, how far away could you get a ride to?
Where do you want to go? We do go to Dartmouth, yes. Absolutely. We sure do. Yes, we will go anywhere within reason. It kind of depends on the frequency. So we have had a number of folks that have had, you know, like, five weeks of chemotherapy, and it's going to be every day, five days, and so those will be special situations, and we'll kind of look at the distance. But yes, if you are calling and you need to go, yes, we go to Dartmouth all the time, we go to Rutland, we go to Brattleboro, we go to Bennington, all those places. We go, we go where you need to go.
Thank you. Any further questions? There being none?
Yes.
Do you have one, two sentences more?
Two sentences. If you need a ride, the best, the way we schedule is to call our office. So the Neighborhood Connections office, 824-4343. We've got lovely front desk staff that are able and willing and excited to schedule that ride for you. That's the best way, so please utilize the service. We're thrilled to serve you.
Thank you. Any further comments on this article?
Thank you, thank you.
Then we will vote on Article 18. Shall the voters of Chester authorize an annual community appropriation of $4,070 to endorse the Mountain Town Connector, a service providing free transportation to residents of Chester? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Article 18 passes. That is the last article on the warning. I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by... Lori Goodrich moves and Evan Parks seconds. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and vote tomorrow. We are adjourned, but you will vote tomorrow.
Recording stopped.
I mean, usually that's the way it's always been. Great, that's great.
Good job. One more getting done.
While you're on vacation.
It's not vacation. We tell those organizations and ask them to have something here, but not all of them.
I wouldn't think an update now and then, when you think it's appropriate, something new coming out, that it would be, it would be helpful, or just getting information to us or to the citizens, whatever, because of your services. It doesn't have to be on a regular basis, you know? When you think it's appropriate, you think there's something to get out there, I think that would be helpful. You could do that way, you could, you're always welcome to come to any select board meeting on the citizens' comments and give a short presentation about something that's come up or some information you want to share. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're always looking to hear new things going on or services that affect the citizens of the town. So, and if you don't want to do it on citizens' comments, we can actually put it as an agenda. If you wanted to give an update, anytime you want to speak to the board, which gets you out in front of the people, which gets you on Zoom, gets you on Sapa, we're more than happy to have an organization that services the citizens of Chester in the area to give an update if you think it's appropriate. It doesn't matter how often or what. I mean, a lot of times, your services are already established, it's already going, and you want to highlight something, or, you know, something's coming up, sure. And especially during the town meeting thing, it's always...